We'll call the July 19th City Council meeting to order. I'll do the prayer pledge and back to the day. Please rise. George, help us as City Council members and also the public to take our job seriously, to look for your guidance in what we say and do, and protect all that are here and all their families abroad. So, thank you so much for what you do for us. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Fact of the day, Viking One, an unmanned U.S. planetary probe, was launched in 1975, arrived at Mars in June 1976, and on July 20th, 1976, Viking One sent back the first close-up photographs of the rust-colored Martian surface. Fact of the day. Approval of the minutes. Any changes? Not look for motion to approve?
Some of.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
I am opposed.
Motion carries unanimously. Next up, presentation. Apopka High School Boys Bowling Team, National Championship Team, are here today. And so would like to bring up the coach. Come on up, Coach. Give us your, I want, we need the lowdown, the whole season, how things got to where you were the national champions.
Thank you very much for allowing us to be here tonight. We had a great season. The boys went undefeated in districts, undefeated, you know, they state, they rolled through the competition and were able to get an invitation to go to Nationals, which was this year in Beaver Creek, Ohio. The boys were able to fundraise and raise the money to go, so we were lucky enough to be able to participate in it. And for the first time this year, we were able to take six boys with us. All six boys qualified as individual out of, no, it was more than that, 300, 300 and some odd boys, 350 something boys, as individuals that we had six represent this Apopka High School. And of that, Jeremy Walker, which is here today, was able to finish sixth overall.
Oh.
One of the boys that's not here tonight is Richard Caruso, who was individual state champion for Apopka this year. So that allowed us to have four, so far for the history of Apopka High School, they've had four individual state champions come from Apopka. In the last 10 years, we've had luck, lucky enough to be able to have six state championships. They've only lost one match during competition play. We've won, we're one of only two schools in the nation that has won two national championships. So, we have been very blessed with the community and what the boys have been able to participate in and what they've done to show what they can do as sports in, for the city of Apopka. None of them, I would say, they came out this year with the fact that we were not able to win Nationals last year. We tried and they came back this year saying they were going to work at it and do everything they could to make it happen, and they did. So, I can't say enough for what they've done and what they've been able to do for Apopka High School. And we're looking forward to having two of them come back next year because we've got, how many we lose this year? We have four that graduated for seniors this year, so.
So why don't we have, who's the senior? Why don't you?
Malik's here and Jeremy.
Would one of y'all like to come up, or both of you? Would you want to come up and say a few words? Tell us about your, oh man, they got the rings on. I see, they got the hardware.
I'm short. Hello, thank you for having me, first off, I want to say. So, with me being a senior, you know, it's my last year and I was going into this year for bowling, I was like, you know, last year at Nationals really didn't go so well. We didn't even make the first cut. And we didn't like that very much. So, this next, so now we're in, this year, we were like, well, we have a really good team, so we have a really good chance of making it to Nationals. So, we worked hard and we practiced every Tuesday or Wednesday, you know, whenever that we all could. And then come Nationals time, we were able to all lock in and just bowl our game that we've been doing since, most of us were, were young. I started when I was, I'd say, in 2017 is when I really took bowling seriously. And then I met Jeremy and Richard and all the other guys that I bowl with now, and they're, these guys are absolutely insane when it comes to bowling, and I just, I want to be like them, but also better than them, too. That's my main goal, but I do, again, appreciate you guys for having me.
Absolutely.
And Jeremy, do you want to say some words?
I don't have to say after that. Yeah. I'm lost for words right now. Yeah, it was my senior year. After winning state, like, I thought we had a really good chance of going to Nationals, like, and winning it, because we, we did, like, really good, like, we broke many school records, many, like, bowling records for the state. And so going into Nationals, we were like, I was very confident in our team, and we, we did it, so it's like, it's a great thing.
You guys have set the bar pretty high for, for Coach Campbell and his, as he continues.
Oh yeah, we, for Nationals, we qualified, we were qualified first the whole time for team, and we went to the final match. I think we lost what, it was like, total, yeah, we were up like 100, 200 pins, like, a front of like every team, so.
Right, remember that last match, like it was close?
Yeah, we, it was, the last match, you can't, because they, how they did it was, it did total pins three games, so every game you bowl and it totaled up the pins, and whoever had the highest pin count would be counted as the winner. And so like the first game, it went, we shot like 244, they went like 246, so it was close. And then we went like 240 or 230, and they went like 210. And then, I think we, yeah, and then we went up and I think we bowled like a 250 something, and they bowled like a 190, so it pretty much ended it there. And I was just, I kind of like looked at my family and I was like, we just won, I was like, I was so shocked.
That's awesome.
But yeah.
That's awesome.
I thank you for having us, though.
You betcha. Coach Campbell, we got less.
I did want to tell you that for all area, Jeremy had the high season average of 246 or 244 for the entire season, so out of all area, he was the high average for this, for the district.
Wow, that's awesome. We want to grab a picture with you guys down front here.
Is that, is that over five games like it is for me?
You're all bowling, two frames when I bowl.
I'm not sad to be missed.
Joe, come on up. Thanks for coming out. I don't know how I can follow that. My average would be 80, and somebody made a remark, that's what bumpers, Joe, so. So, Joe Patton, Director of HR. So, in, last week in May, we did a employee survey to try to get an overall view of employee status as far as their outlook on the organization itself. So, we gave the employees about, well, actually, we gave them a week to turn in surveys, they were paper surveys. The paper was special paper, if you copied it, it would actually say it was copied, so we wouldn't count those, we didn't get any of those. So, which is, which is great, I love that. And, but we did have a pretty good rate of return, which I'll explain. I know everyone has a binder that I gave you from our meetings previously this week, and these are the overall results of the city's survey. So, as you can see here, this first slide represents the department, some departments, I combined because they were so small, like, for instance, finance and IT. This is the rate of return that we had, this is the number of surveys we distributed totaling 493. This represents the total active employees that we have at that time. The surveys received, this is the number of surveys that we received back. Now, the surveys were confidential, so they were not, there's no names on them, there's no identifying marks on them. So, people have been asking me, well, who, you know, who answered that? I have no clue who answered that. So, 328, we had a return of 67%, which in, did some research, in an organization our size, between 70 and 80% is pretty good. So I think we did pretty well. I was hoping for 80% at least, but, you know, it is what it is. This slide represents the number of respondents from, from the previous slide. I know it's a little bit small, so you have it in your packets. The bottom axis, horizontal axis right here, represents the questions. So there were 16 questions altogether. They ranged from, you know, how's your emotional well-being, you know, do we take that into account? Do you know where the policies are? Can you access those? How does management solve issues that you have? Are you satisfied with your team? What's your work-life balance? Are you happy with that? Are you satisfied with the training that you receive? And then, the last one is, would you prefer Apopka as a place to work? Would you refer somebody, a friend, a relative, or whatever, to work at Apopka? So this, this section, this section represents the policies. The first one is emotional well-being. Now, all across the spectrum, what we found was that the overall feeling towards the organization was positive. And a little disclaimer that I must say is that this blue line, this light blue line here, those are neutral comments. So, individuals that had the survey, they answered neutral, either good or bad, they were in the middle. I counted those as positive. Now, some, some folks would, would not count those at all, some would, would put them in a separate section, but I counted them as positive. I felt that they needed to be counted because they did answer it. They didn't answer their whole sheet neutral, they just answered some, some questions neutral.
So you don't think, and sorry to interrupt, the, the neutral, that was going to be my only question on this, is that you're, you categorize neutral as positive when, in the very term itself, it's neutral, it's not positive, it's not negative.
It's neutral.
So I think it somewhat skews the data, or at least some of the narratives in here, that there's a positive of 80% when really it's only 40% because there's a lot of neutrals. So, and I did some research, too, and there's nothing that, and to your point, that designates that neutrals in this position, and this should be one way or the other. So, it's up to the interpreter, obviously, and the data that's provided.
And it is, and, and if you did take those out, which, which I looked at that, too, we would still be positive.
Sure.
We would still be on the positive side.
There's positive.
And, and I, I looked at that, but I didn't want to discount the neutral answers, if that makes sense. So, with that being said, this is one spectrum that, that you can see that when, when these horizontal lines start coming together, you can see the positive, this is neutral, of course. The dark blue is very satisfied, the green is satisfied, the blue is neutral, the brown is dissatisfied, the red is very dissatisfied. And then the gray down here below, they did not answer the question at all. So, when you look at, through the spectrum, emotional well-being, we fared pretty well in that. Policies, that turned out very well. As you can see, when we come down to cooperation between departments was very good. Also, when you start looking at cooperation between divisions, we start seeing a closing gap in between these lines to where they all come together. So what does that mean? That means that the question, the answers between negative and positive were more or less becoming equal. So, we had more, more negative and less positive in that area. So these are the areas that I want to concentrate on first. And, and just a reminder, this is a, this is the first survey that's ever been done, so I, nothing to go off of, and it's just a first look. So, with that being said, some of these issues here that we find, like Department Director-Chief Performance, as you can see, this is, this is a little bit close, although it's still positive, is something that we need to look at. Department Director-Chief Personnel Issues, those individuals, you know, how do they handle personal issues with staff? Then, as we go out further, individuals satisfied with their teams, their teams got very hard marks, very high marks. Also with supervisors handling issues, got high marks as well. All the way through the spectrum, as you can see. Some, some interesting things, I did, I did think that the teamwork was interesting, I thought that was an interesting balance there. I also thought that satisfied with training, I thought that was interesting, which is this line here. Are you satisfied with the training that you're receiving for your job? Another thing that I thought was interesting was satisfied with benefits. So, the majority of, you know, the, actually, the, a large majority of the organization is satisfied with their benefits. And then, one thing that I thought was very interesting is that, that most people would refer to us to, as a place to work, to their friends and family. So I thought that was interesting, too. So, going back to this, we do need to concentrate on this. There are some other visuals that I made. So, just to explain those, this is, this is the whole presentation in a nutshell. So, this is just pie charts, so you can get a big visual of that. This is overall final results, these are the numbers that you can see. And then I did pie charts, so the difference with the pie charts is this represents percentages. So as you can see, the difference here, you can see it a little bit easier. And Commissioner Nesta, this was your, your comment, you know, where I have 74%, that's adding these three together. So, you know, you could do it either way. So, very satisfied is 15, satisfied is 32%. I would normally add those two together, but this time I added this. And then you can see the dissatisfied and very dissatisfied. So you can go through the presentation with that, and this is, like I said, this is our first step. Okay. Any questions for Joe?
I guess more comments versus questions.
Sure.
Because I mean, it's pretty self-explanatory.
Yes, sir.
What I would first like to do is thank the mayor and you for embarking on this survey. I think it's needed, and I'll start my comments based off of, and you, you provided the verbatims on some of the, the written commentary.
I did.
At the end of the surveys.
I did.
And one, one struck me, and it says, "Hope this is taken seriously." And whoever wrote that from Public Services, you have my commitment that this is being taken very seriously.
Absolutely.
I mean, it's, this, this type of stuff, even though it can be pretty damning, when you take the first kind of inventory of people's employee satisfaction, it's something to, to take it and then do something with it.
Right.
You know, I always, you know, things like these, in every organization I've ever worked for, you know, this is valuable insights on how to improve the organization. Every organization uses them. To your point, 85 participation rate is kind of the benchmark that I've used in our industries, but, you know, having this high of a percentage return is, is, it pleases me that there's been that high of a rate. And I think as you do this more consistently, and people see that there's actionable steps that are taken as a result of these surveys, more and more people will participate in it and be more transparent and frank about what their feedback is within the organization.
Yeah, I hope, I hope so. You know, out of, out of these answers, we're still, I'm still evaluating the remarks, so coding that, so we get a good feel of, you know, where, where the remarks are in comparison to the actual numbers for the, for the answers, so I want to compare those because those, the remarks were at the, were the last question, so they don't, you know, you have to relate them to the questions in per se, and some of them didn't relate to any questions, so that was on the survey. So, which is fine, too. That's what it's there for.
Yes, and I, you know, these things, it's, it's, I always gravitate for, my eyes always first go to the things that are blatantly bad, right?
Right.
You want to focus on, what do I need to fix first versus, let's, let's all congratulate, congratulate ourselves about what's working fine. It's more about what's, what's happening where there's spikes in very dissatisfied employees. And, you know, those, those spikes are, which all seem to be related to department head kind of positions, so culture of promoting coaching and mentoring, management to solve issues, Department Director-Chief Performance, Department Director-Chief Personal Issues, those are the ones that were highest. And we talked a little bit about this on Monday, kind of.
Right, those, those in this area.
Maybe give Council a little bit of insight about what you plan to do specifically within those areas, because again, it's more of a top-down, it could be a perception thing, it could be a communication thing.
It could, it could be, so what, what I want to do is delve a little deeper into each question. So, when, when I look at this and I, and I kind of put together the, the remarks, so what I want to do is, and, and I don't want to pressure people to think that they're being identified, so I'd like to do some more surveys. I know surveys are, are, you know, everybody's doing them these days, but it's, it's a way to get an honest feedback, especially if they're, you know, untrackable. So, try to get, delve, delve a little deeper into, let's say, Department Director-Chief Performance, okay? So that's a little higher, what exactly are you talking about? And maybe not spin it to put somebody on the spot, but, you know, give us your honest feedback on that, and let's look deeper into it. What those questions are, I don't know yet until I get more into the, you know, remarks and start coding that, so I can see where, where we are in relation to the, these particular numbers, if that makes sense, so.
Yeah, because, you know, and again, just so the public's aware, we got the, the different commentary that people free-form entered into the survey.
Right, yeah.
Again, on an anonymous basis, we don't know who wrote it, but you, you, you hit buzzwords like toxic and things like this, very kind of negative sounding words. And so it's, that's different than people just being the regular very dissatisfied with upper management because they're not communicating down, or they're not being responsive. You know, the word toxic, that's where I would want to peel back that onion and make sure that we're really unpacking why that is and resolving those sorts of issues.
Well, not, and, and not only that is, you have to look at the, the number of repetitious comments, those, you know, like, it's toxic, you know, or, or similar to that, you know, what, you know, what's the repetition of that and, you know, the volume that we're going to talk about in, in that, is it one person or is it the majority?
Yeah.
You know, so you have to look at that as well. So yeah, I agree with that.
And, and two last points. One point being, there's some negative criticisms of us as council, and.
Yes.
I welcome that, and we're not, you know.
We're not immune to.
We're not immune to, exactly, that's, thank you for filling in my sentence for me. I couldn't think of a word.
That's because I said you so long.
But really, when you look. But really, when you look at the, when you look at the free-form commentary outside of the scores themselves, you know, there, there's four kind of key areas that I, I picked up on. Obviously, the, the leadership, you know, the environments in which leadership's creating within the different departments.
Right.
You know, pay, obviously, is a budget consideration, um, coming up within our budget workshops, so I'm hoping that we can.
Pay is big, and we're, we're, we're talking about doing a, a pay study, so, yeah.
And then the work, uh, PTO, you know, obviously, Public Services was high and keen on the whole four-day work week kind of model, so hopefully, we'll have a point of view in budget workshops next week to say, hey, you could potentially consider that, or you can't, here's the ramifications budget-wise and all that sort of stuff.
Right, and we did do a survey about the four-day work week, however, it was, you know, in order to do that, you have to go to a bi-weekly payroll. So nobody wanted to give up their weekly payroll to do the four, four-ten, so, you know, and we were talking about staggering that, so we wouldn't lose service to the community.
And then lastly, just the tools to do the job.
Right.
I mean, just making sure that everybody's got what they need.
Yeah, that's, that's concerning.
Yeah. And again, and valid points. A lot of times, if you were to sit here and hit the tape recorder on commentary that we have up on here on the dais, a lot of times, our conversation does center around police and fire. Uh, Public Services picks up on that, Finance, Human Resources, all these different other general employee departments, um, have that, that mindset. So I just want to make sure that we're cognizant of that when we enter in budget workshops. I'm, I'm looking at you, but I'm really kind of talking to the other department heads, too.
Right.
Um, again, I thank you for embarking on this, putting together this material. I think there's some work to, to do, but now this is, it sets the baseline, and the next time that we do this, hopefully, it's on a fairly frequent basis, obviously, annual at a minimum, um, you can kind of grade yourself as you progress.
Sure. And, and I would really appreciate some, you know, suggestions, you know, Commissioner Vazquez gave some suggestions, was, were very good. And, uh, you know, so I'd appreciate those.
Commissioner Vazquez?
Uh, no, well, he covered, let I finish your sentence. Um, he covered, uh, most of what I, you know, I think we all felt. Um, and I do appreciate even that they included how some of the staff sees us as a council. Uh, I think that's important for us to see. Um, and certainly, I, I, again, I'm going to kind of just say that I do appreciate that you did, that, that this was conducted. It gives us sort of an overview of some, where we need some improvement and where we can kind of say, we're doing a good job in another sense. So maybe if we can just find the balance, but I appreciate this. And this gives us something to refer to and something to kind of go back and say, how can we fix it? And, um...
And I, and I have to give my staff some kudos as well, because they did a lot of work. They did, they crunched the numbers, they, you know, they counted the ballots, they, or the surveys, they, uh, you know, uh, took the remarks and, you know, put them on, uh, spreadsheets so we, we could do some more data, uh, searching, so, yeah. Data mining, so, yeah.
And we just want the staff to know, I mean, every member that, that works for the city, that we understand, um, that they are the backbone of the day-to-day operations, and that they are truly respected and they are truly appreciated. And that's important, because as I said to you during the review was, that I, I feel that I want the, I'd like for the staff to feel that they are valued. Every day that they come to work, that they are valued. That's very important to me.
Right.
Commissioner Nesta?
Yeah, I just, just, just one of the, on the consent agenda item, number four. One of the things we, when I got here five years ago, we, you know, it was, we looked at, you know, advancement, somebody going from a, a worker bee to the first level of management. We hadn't had any, any training, so the, that, the Institute for Human Development, that's what we've got set up today on the, on the consent agenda is to do that. What we do, what we've asked is all the departments to identify the workers that we're trying to put into a, a more of a management role, and how you make that transition. Just because you're a great worker doesn't mean you'll be a great manager. And so what we're trying to do is give them the tools to be able to make that leap from, from a worker to a, to a manager. And so.
Right.
It's.
And, and some supervisors we have, you know, they, they, they need the training.
Yeah.
They've requested the training, uh, as far as, you know, how to deal with individuals and so on and so forth. So, um, yeah, I, I can already see a, a difference in the leadership, uh, and how they handle things and how they approach, uh, individuals. Uh, we still got a long way to go, but, uh, I do see, uh, some differences happening, so...
Well, thank you, Joe. Thanks for, thanks to you and your team.
Thank you all very much.
For putting this together. Absolutely. Okay. Public comment. Susan?
Uh, Albert McKimme. Albert McKimme, 3603 Golden Gem Road. Today, I would like to talk about the city charter. However, the intricacies and subtlety of law and the English language not, would not allow me to complete that task for the benefit of the public in just four minutes. So today, I deliver documentation to our commissioners that would better allow them to make a decision that may cause them to consider intervening on our behalf. However, before I begin on that topic, I have been requested by numerous people to ask why the city wants to rename, rename a road which was previously acknowledged by the city to a man responsible for a contribution to the city's heritage. I personally find that disrespectful. I feel at this point, it would be more appropriate to recognize Austin Durand's sacrifice by naming a new road in his memory than changing the name of an existing road. What will be next? Will, uh, we have Richard Anderson Roadway, or perhaps Nelson's Follies? Recently, Michael Rodriguez was quick to remind City Hall that the charter could not be altered without a ballot voted on by the electorate. I have a question about apparent changes to the city charter that appear to have occurred in the first six months of Brian Nelson's tenure in office. And it would appear very fortuitous that our current city attorney, who recently extolled on his vast expedience with city charters, just happened to be the city attorney by that time. So I'm hoping he will be able to explain in more detail to the commission about the charter amendments while we await the results of an ethics complaint on these potential violations. Intent or lack of intent is not our concern in any change to the city charter that may have occurred. We are not concerned if any change altered the mayor's powers. The question is simply, was the charter altered in a way without vote and consent of the electorate? And if so, who was privy to those changes? And was there an implicit responsibility on anyone who was party or had knowledge of those changes to report them? Do changes in archives, public records, or servers support our assertion changes were made to the charter without a vote? I would be happy to display our paper copies which lead us to believe it was. At the last City Hall meeting, Commissioner Cal Becker put forward a motion to review the charter, something that we have been requesting for some time. Our new city attorney mentioned that the commission that might themselves resolve the need for the parts of the charter that would benefit from being revised. The inference being the public need not participate, that he would be prepared to meet with Commissioner Becker to discuss things prior to a meeting with the full commission. Commissioners, some of us come here every meeting to support you in providing transparency and accountability in the city, something we fight very hard. A few people in this audience will have an IQ of above 140. That puts us in the top 1% of the population, not to mention our combined experience with life skills and people. We should be considered an asset to the city. We are no longer a peanut gallery. One member of staff recently commented that I get things wrong, and I can accept that. But that is because the, the lack of workshop, the city's failure to keep us informed. Much of what I feed back to the city is the content the city puts on YouTube, so if I'm in error, who is really to blame? Seven months ago, I requested information from planning. My recollection is Mr. Hitt told us there was a new report due out in January that was costing the city $80,000. As of today, we still don't have it. Yet we are still voting on planning issues without really having confirmed our facts. Are we speaking about 6,000 new homes around Kelly Park, or is that merely likely to escalate into double digits? When the city ceased to rubber-stamp consents adjacent to roads they have no control over because they belong to Orange County? Some planning consents are regulated by Florida statute, not much the commission can do. But I guess if we know better, we should be able to do better. I would hope in future. Thank you.
Dennis New? Dennis New, 105 West Magnolia. Good evening, counsel. I want to talk to you about history. Do any of you know why Welch Road is called Welch Road? Or Usler Road is Usler Road? Or Grosenbacher is Grosenbacher? Or Martin is Martin? Or Harmon Road is Harmon Road? Because these were all pioneers in this area. They were named that for a reason. Some of them were deaths in World War II. Grosenbacher being one of them. Wood Harmon lived on Harmon Road, he and his son and two grandsons. His son, Binion Harmon. Binion, strike a key with anybody? Yeah, Binion Road, Harmon Road. He owned several hundred acres of grove. They were avid environmentalists. Mr. Harmon was a member of the Apopka Sportsman's Club, Wekaiva Springs State Park, and an avid hunter. Why is this admin trying to erase Apopka history and replace it with a man that has a questionable history? Political payback's the reason. Same reason the man sits on the Lake Apopka Natural Gas Board. I want to remind you that the man that you want to name this road after was implicated in drug running in the 1980s. He was indicted twice for money laundering. He took a plea deal and got out on a technicality on the second indictment. They don't give plea deals to the innocent. He was the cause of an ethics investigation, city-related, into the city's borrowing practice. He worked at a bank at the time, he was a city councilman, and the city, the bank that he worked for loaned the city a lot of money. The ethics investigation resulted in them having to move the loans. It cost the taxpayers tens of thousands of dollars. Then, lo and behold, he had to recuse himself from voting on zoning changes and building approvals, as it was found that his bank was backing a lot of the builders and developers. He recused himself after he was caught by, I think it was a Channel Six or Channel Nine investigative reporter, and it was all brought out in the news. Beginning in 1978, he was the primary person of interest in a still unsolved death of a young woman who was a witness in the criminal case against him. He is the man who has weaponized on more than one occasion code enforcement with his connections with Lieutenant Brick. The man has so many clouds in his past, it's my opinion that he's unethical and moral and guilty of criminal actions. I urge every council member to vote against this naming or renaming. There are so many worthy people in Apopka, both past and present, that are worthy of such praise and accolades. How about Leroy Gilam? Norman Usler? Calvin Grosenbacher, who, by the way, was one of the first volunteer fire chiefs we had here. Johnny McLeod, city attorney for years. W.C. Champney. Mark Ryan. Dr. Alan Higginbotham, an esteemed preacher that preached at First Baptist Church for years. Jim Mahaffey and T.A. Shepherd, two men that funded from their own pockets the Little League complex when they built it down at Dremleak Elementary School, because the one down where they built the county park at wasn't big enough. So, yeah, a lot of proud citizens of this city that deserve such honors, and they all had no questionable histories. So again, I urge you to vote against this accusation, uh, this action. The reputation of Apopka has suffered enough on issues in this administration. It's suffered enough under the actions of the person it's named. How many thousands, well, no, we can change that now, because he was a primary officer at the bank that fleeced the city out of hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Lee Morgan. Leroy Bell, 2308 Bloomettis Court, Bart Helen. I want to start tonight with, Dennis spoke about the Peanut Gallery, but it seems to be another name for the citizens that come from this administration, uh, News Corp, calling us Jerry Springers. Uh, my part in the Jerry Springer Show was last meeting night. I was verbally and physically threatened. I asked this great police chief to take my statement. He said he wouldn't take it, and I asked why. He said, "I wouldn't believe what he came up with," inferring that what he came up with would be not satisfactory to what really happened. This administration have close ties with the cult leader in Tallahassee, a state representative, Doug Bangston. Uh, he weighed in about the Jerry Springer Show. He was the one that put it out. But I, I wonder why the Apopka chief or the Apopka voice didn't pick up the story when the cult leader at his school pulled the little girl of color arm out of socket and wouldn't turn over the tape to the police department, maybe because he was working with the chamber, and he also was, uh, I think, the chapter of the police department and close friend with the administration there. And still, I think y'all making money up at the office now together. He stood right there as a commissioner and admitted that his son broke the law. Why didn't the Apopka chief, uh, the Apopka voice pick that up? But when it comes down to serious stuff to people of colors like annexation, the Apopka voice can come up, do you want french fries with annexation? Always something disparaging against the people over across the track. I wondered that, or will they pick up or tell the story about the cult leader, family all over YouTube calling people of color the N-words and Mexican, dirty Mexicans? When will this administration start standing up for the citizen? This police department, I see that on this chart up there, Commissioner Nesta just asked the HR man about the positives and negatives, and he decided to put the negatives in. But I wonder how many took the survey of the 85% of the firefighters' deaths not pleased with the fire chief? When is this administration going to start honoring the vote of you guys still reaching out for legal opinions? I would hope that you, mayor, can get your press corps to start reporting on that, while, and, and while you got your smirk on your face, um, you and the Apopka Ebony, the chief Ebony, because now you're trying to prove that you're not prejudiced.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Shontay. Shontay Jimison, Reimagined Communities, Emerson Park, Florida, 32703. Uh, good afternoon, mayor and commissioners. Thank you for your time. I'm here just to give a quick update on, um, we came here last year in September to ask the city to partner with us on our literacy initiative, and you guys so graciously allowed us to do that. So I just want to come back and give you a public update of what we've been working on. This was the actual presentation that we gave you last year, so just going with what we said, the deliverals that we said that we would do. Um, we did seven live reading sessions since the last meeting. We gave out 217 books to students. We featured three local student artists. We have the Free Little Library, which is outside in front of the... which is outside in front of City Hall that was built by students in our communities. We hosted the annual Read Around the City contest from March the 6th to April the 3rd. We had 129 students return maps with 1,290 books read by elementary school students in four weeks. We gave 24 reading volunteers to the local schools with 19 businesses participating this year and five families. We hosted four online reading sessions with two game sessions. We did with our AOK and our Creative Kids Services. We worked with Randall Construction to build the Free Little Library out there. These students were mentored by construction workers. They came up with the designs. They actually built the library that is out there. This was built by students in our community, for students in our community. So they also got service learning hours. We did the award ceremony with Kiwanis Club of Apopka, and every school in Apopka participated in our award ceremony. We have collaborated with every school in the Apopka area. And so we just wanted to come and publicly thank you and the city and the citizens because we know it was citizens' funds, city funds, that allowed us to do what we've done. We have exceeded our expectations in the eight months that we have been going. We have so many cool things coming up. And I would just ask that you would continue to support the kids of Apopka. If you don't support Reimagine Community, support somebody. Support these children. They are doing some amazing things. I know that right now we have a lot of things going on in Apopka, and there's so many different things happening. But always support our children. We have some amazing children, some amazing schools, and I just want to thank you guys for supporting us. And we ask that you continue to support us in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say real quick, too, just thank you for what you do for our community. It's a big deal. You've got students, businesses, and schools all coming together, working together, and that's not an easy feat. So thank you for what you do and thank you for partnering with us.
Thank you.
Sylvester Hall?
Thank you, Shontay.
Thank you.
Good evening again, Mayor and Commissioners. I try not to get discouraged when I come up here, so I'm gonna have a nice smile on my face because I say this over and over again in the city of Apopka, in the state of Florida, and in our country. We had a national crisis because too many good people standing by and watching bad things happen and not do anything about it. Either scared to speak up, intimidated to speak up, but it's a national crisis and it's gonna come to full circle. I say this all the time, and to this especially for the Commissioners. Any city leader, any first responders, principles matters, integrity matters, honesty matter, accountability matters, responsibility matters, moral conscious matters, ethics matters, character matters, procedures matters, leadership matters, laws matter, lies matter, and the truth matters. And I keep saying, when we normalize the abnormal, we desensitize the truth. And when you look at what's going on in the city of Apopka, it's a lot of abnormal. But we look at it and we make it normal, and we don't even bother wanting to know the truth. Now, last city council meeting, I walked in around about 6:00, let me say around about 1:30. So I got here right on time. But when I sat down next to Mr. Bell, him and Glenn Bobb kept looking at each other, going back and forth. And really, it was getting on my nerves. And Leroy knew it, but I didn't know what was going on. So Leroy explained to me what was going on. Now, after the meeting, I had a chance to see and hear exactly what was going on. And then the next day, Mr. Glenn Bobb, Glenn Brooks called me himself. And he said, "Sylvester, I want to apologize to you for my behavior because I really respect you, and I really respect Leroy, and I love that young man. And I would like to sit down, all three of us sit down. We can talk and we can kind of work this thing out." And I told him, I said, "Glenn", I say, "I get tired of people saying, you know, they love each other." I say, "You know, love is free. It don't cost nothing to share love and give love. It's free." So when I look at what took place, and I called Leroy the next day, I said, "Leroy, there's something I was very concerned with because why would Glenn get up in your face right here in city council? Right in front of the mayor? Right in front of the police chief? And he's on the clock! He's a city employee. He's on the clock." Now, if I was his boss, he would have been fired on the spot for conduct unbecoming. And he's a leader in the administration. So when I say we normalize the abnormal and when we hear the truth, it don't bother us because he shouldn't be employed with the city of Apopka, period. When you look at it, he shouldn't be employed. But I called Leroy and I said, "Leroy, I say, 'Thank God you held yourself together because if you didn't and you were thrown one blow, you weren't allowed to be, you weren't allowed to be able to come back in this city council while the mayor was mayor, period. Or they would have disbarred you forever.'" Now, those are things that you say is not right. And the police chief was here and did nothing about it. The mayor didn't jump on that gavel and talk about decurbing. He didn't say anything. Now, the picture that you got before you, I went to a friend's house Thursday, and they woke up to spray painting niggers and stuff on their cars. I told them 15 cars bannolized. I wonder how did the police chief document this? Is it a hate crime? I didn't see it on the news. I didn't see it anywhere. So when you look at things that are abnormal, we need to look at what's really going on in Apopka, and we really need to make some changes. Thank you.
Chris Williams?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Chris Williams. Address 31 West Laurel Street, Apopka. My main purpose of being here tonight, hopefully it adds some positivity, is to indeed hand my wholehearted support behind Tennis Galaxy and its organization up at Pumcan. I came here 14 years ago from London, and I never thought I'd be able to give my kids the opportunity that certainly I couldn't have done back in London through the tutelage of Peter and indeed of Tony, two well-qualified individuals, not just as tennis coaches, but also in terms of sports science and pediatric exercise science. The work that they continue to do out there is outstanding. They are teaching, training, making healthy these young kids and the senior population, which I hope will be reflected in the fact that Apopka as a template will become a fit city. My daughter, she started when she was seven years old. She is now 16. She started and Peter and his coaches taught her physical literacy, things that unfortunately is not taught in schools today. Taught her about fundamental movement skills, how to handle adversity, how to overcome change, things that are pertinent in everyday life, things that I couldn't acquire if, again, I was back in the UK. And as much as I sit here and I listen to the things that is happening in the city that I love because I do consider myself a Apopkin, I think we have to be blessed with the fact that we have two outstanding individuals in Tennis Galaxy that is bringing more to the table than we could ever imagine in helping to make our society that is Apopka fit and healthy. They're reasonably priced. They're absolutely wonderful blokes to know. They have our best interests at heart, and they're intrinsically motivated. My daughter has gone from being a soccer player to a tennis player to now representing an Apopka high school with pride and dignity. In addition, she was the first lady at 16 to win the Apopka Cup. I have a six-year-old daughter that will be following in her footsteps if the policies don't change and if the Tennis Galaxy organization is allowed to operate without hindrance. My point is exactly that. Is that some of the policies, I believe, that will be introduced shortly might have a hindrance on their ability to be productive in terms of delivering a first-class service to us as citizens of Apopka and especially to our young generation, which, as you can see, worldwide, nationally, is in a crisis in terms of obesity, metabolic syndrome, exercise deficit, exercise deficit syndrome. These things will arrive on our doorstep if we don't tackle it. So, again, thank you for the opportunity to express my sentiment about something that's so very, very good in Apopka, and we need to recognize it, and we need to wholeheartedly support them in their endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Norrette Turan?
Norrette Turan, former general employee. How appropriate and telling this survey is to what I have been saying. The HR survey, the employee survey. I was wrongfully terminated on March 24, 2023 for documenting and speaking out about threats made by the current Public Services Director because I took my job seriously, Mr. Mayor. On March 22, 2023, I submitted a second grievance against the Public Services Director to Human Resources recounting an impromptu meeting in which the Public Services Director, Mr. Boodhu, threatened bodily harm to two women in the Finance Department. At my termination, the current HR director stated that he did not have to address this second grievance because the director had decided to terminate me. What an absurd statement, given the content of my second grievance. Just last council, this body was reluctant to denounce threats made by the public. But what about by the employee? More specifically, an at-will department head? It is not acceptable for anyone, especially a director, to have professed the following. These are words of Mr. Boodhu verbatim on March 8, 2023, at high noon, as he likes to say. "I'll rip the shit out of them. I'll rip the shit out of them. You guys didn't see me yet. I am vicious. I am a smart engineer. I was playing dumb." This is about as explicit as it gets. But the memory is so vivid to me because of how furious this at-will employee got. You could imagine horns sprouting from his forehead. No one deserves to be spoken to or about in such a way or such a manner. The employee deserves a safe workplace, free from hostility, free from fear. But Mr. Boodhu is a self-declared wolf in sheep's clothing, vicious, playing dumb. As an employee and as an American, I did my duty, and I reported this disturbing incident because when you see something, you say something. I expected others to do their duty and have Mr. Boodhu evaluated accordingly, perhaps dismissed, perhaps baker-acted. But instead, I was terminated and my grievance was destroyed because there is no evidence of it in the employee files. You are overrun by unqualified, incompetent, entitled, and potentially dangerous employees at the highest level. Two years ago, all the employees took hostile workplace training. So we know what is unacceptable, but yet, here I am. Mr. Boodhu's extreme hostility and threats, as defined by policy, are unacceptable. Yes, indeed, from where I stand, Mr. Boodhu is exactly as he says. He is vicious. Because to come out of retirement to take other people's retirements, there is no more fitting word. I have shown that Mr. Boodhu is not only incompetent, greedy, malicious, but he is a liar with the talent to corrupt once-decent employees. This is truly a shame and a stain on the city. This is a story of my last hours of employment. What you do with it is your story.
Tom Hart?
Hi, Tom Hart, 1131 Degrood Drive in beautiful Rock Springs Ridge, Apopka, Florida. I stand before you, a very proud Floridian and a Apopkin. I want to start off by saying how much I appreciate our Recreation Department for keeping our parks clean. I visit my friends all over the country, and the Northwest Park is just absolutely amazing. And I have friends who come and visit me and say the same. I also want to congratulate Donnie Rowland and the team that were highlighted recently in Florida Turf Digest. Hard work at the Northwest Complex is always noticed. I have a niece who plays softball who just got a full ride to Ole Miss, who we're really proud for, and she loves the complex as well. I've coached flag football for the rec team for the city. I've had my kids in a rec team for soccer as well. I always look to the city for recreational activities. And like I said, I am a proud Floridian and a Apopkin. Instruction and organized forms of activities are necessary for the youth, for everyone in the city, everyone who's going around and trying to have a well-organized time. Instruction and organized forms of activities are valuable for proper utilization. As a taxpayer, I don't expect everything in the city and the government to be given to me for free. I feel that's an unrealistic expectation. Feel like just because I pay taxes doesn't mean I get to hop in one of the rec carts and drive it around whenever I feel like, right? But I want to make sure that that gets said because as a businessman, I appreciate businesses that provide that consistency, that provide professional operation, that give back to the community. And to me, that is Tennis Galaxy. I've been a student at Tennis Galaxy for a little over a year. My son Hayden has been with them for a little over a year as well. Quite honestly, I've maybe taken one lesson from Peter, and everything's been from Tony. All you need to do is go out there and watch how that team works with the citizens of Apopka, how they utilize the courts, and watch any other way that's being taught out there. And you see, what do you want the youth of your country to actually grow up and see and live in? And I feel like everyone that's there cultivates a community of growth, of making sure that we are proud to be there. We are proud to work and play in the community. And I feel like there are others out in that community that are trying to not give back to the community, who are not trying to help others that are out there. And in fact, there's, I've heard of altercations out there because of court time. I know we have four awesome courts. I love them to death, right? I go out there and I'm not the Adonis of a man out there that I play saw the time like Mr. Williams. However, I do have a good time. And I really feel that there are some conversations happening that are going to limit this. There isn't an actual city-run tennis program. If there was, I probably would have gone to that first because I am a proud Apopkin. But in the lack of that, I found one that provides the same level of professionalism, courtesy, and community that I would expect from the city. And I feel like that program is going to be in jeopardy because of different things that are coming along for that. And much like if I were to go start my own soccer league right now and not do a great job in the community, I'm sure that the rec team would have something to say about that. So, anyway, just another, another vote from a citizen who is concerned that that community is going to suffer because of the misgivings of others. So do appreciate the time from the council. I'm going to continue living and proud Apopkin. And, you know, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got six. Considered items for motion.
Yeah, I'm gonna pull three and four.
Mm-hmm. We've got a motion to approve one, two, five, and six.
One, two, five, and six. Correct.
So moved.
Now, motion by Commissioner Becker.
A second.
Say by Commissioner Blazquez, although you favor.
Aye.
Okay. Number three.
So number three, on the lead-in packet, it, in the summary, talks about the makeup of the Apopka Firefighters Pension Board. Of trustees consisting of five members, two of which are elected by the plan members, two serve as resident trustees and are appointed by the mayor and ratified by the city council. Our charter does not say that. In section...
I have it here.
It's chapter 54 under Retirement Systems, Article 3, Section 5468. The board shall consist of five trustees, two of whom, unless otherwise prohibited by law, shall be legal residents of the city, who shall be appointed by the city council. And so my understanding is the currently sitting, or one of the currently sitting resident appointees desires to stay on the board, and I support that decision. That member being Todd Bankston.
What, can I just add to that for a second? Okay. Of course, Mr. Todd Bankston did send, I think, all of us an email where he kind of details that he was told that he was going to remain as a representative. And truth be said, I saw, and this has nothing to do, nothing against Mr. Scott Braswell. There was nothing in this package, no bio, no information, nothing for us. Well, for me, to at least look at who he was and or what his credentials were. And I did ask the city clerk if she had anything, and there was nothing provided. And so unless you can tell us why, Mr. Todd Bankston, and there was nothing in the lead-in package even detailing his time in service or why he was being removed or replaced.
It's just, it's, it turns up. I mean, the, they were, they were given some statute or some...
It's in our...
Charter.
Charter. Or...
Yeah.
Chapter...
You asked me what the provision on the... One, it is sentences, Board of Trustees, 54-11?
54-68.
54-68.
Part A. So about two or three sentences in. Oh, you're good.
Rock, can you help me get on the... Just while he's taking a look at that, the, Scott Braswell is a long-term resident of Apopka. He's been a banker for 40 years and so he's well-qualified. I mean, if you look at the board makeups...
Sorry, thank you. If you look at the makeup of the boards, we have a non... Each of them, each of the boards have non-employees as a part of the board, and this would be the only board that has all five members are firefighters. You look at the general admin, we've got, I think we've got two that are on the board that are not city employees. On the police board, we have one who happens to be a financial advisor on the board. So this would be the only board that has all five members are firefighters. So if that's what you think we want, need, then...
Yeah, I've got the section now.
Okay, good. All right, Cliff.
It literally said, "Board..."
Is your mic on?
There's a little red button on that.
How about that? Is that better?
There you go.
Okay. Learning the technology. Okay. The board shall consist of five trustees, two of whom, unless otherwise prohibited by law, shall be legal residents of the city, who shall be appointed by the city council, and two of whom shall be members of the system, who shall be elected by majority of the firefighters who are members of the system. So that's what that section reads. If this is the correct section, 54-68.
I was just disputing in the lead-in packet saying that they're mayoral appointees, which is not the case based off of that.
That's four, and there's a fifth one.
That's appointed by the rest of the trustees.
Yes.
Just approved as a ministerial duty by the city council.
That's what it says. The fifth trustee shall be chosen by majority of the previous four trustees as provided for herein. Such person's name shall be submitted to the city council upon receipt of the fifth person's name. The city council then, as a ministerial duty, appoints such person to the Board of Trustees as its fifth trustee.
So with that said, unless there's any reason as to why the pension board is not operating in an optimal or effective manner for us, I would assume keep the continuity and Mr. Bankston has said that he wants to continue in his service, and he's made mention that in conversations with you. You had had a similar commitment, so I would, I would make a motion to appoint Todd Bankston for another two years on the pension board.
We need to, because it's not on the, his name is not here, do we need to bring it back to the next, we have another council meeting? We'll put it back on the next council meeting.
I don't think that has to be a noticed item, though.
Does it?
Attorney Shepherd, we don't have to notice this, correct?
Of who's being appointed?
Correct.
You don't have to notice. It's a good idea to make sure that they'll continue to serve, but I've been hearing from Commissioner Bankston or Vice Mayor Bankston that he's already agreed that he would serve.
Becker.
Becker.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Okay, make a motion. Got a motion by Commissioner Becker?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Three to one. Okay, number four?
Number four, we're being asked to vote on a sole source provider. This is not a sole source provider. This is basic management consulting. And I know that they reference the DISC, the DISC model or DISC personality assessment. These are not unique things to this provider. So if we're asking for a sole source, I just can't. It's not sole source.
I can only give you the history. This started out, I guess, an evaluated source, which is supposed to have the unique qualifications and the continuation of the services. That's why we said sole source. But Joe can explain to you the services that have been provided.
And we're exceeding, I'm sorry, the 50K. That's why we're bringing it to you.
Right. So I would tell you that, and I know there was questions during our meetings the other day. So I will tell you that the reason for the sole source at this point is that we want to continue with this service. I understand that there are other companies out there that do DISC. There are other companies that do other evaluation pieces as well. However, those organizations do not have the experience with this organization that this organization has started with. So when we talk about sole source, that was the, you know, motivation behind making that a sole source recommendation is that we wanted to continue with our progression in this area. So with the individual that we're talking about, this organization, they have done leadership training for all the supervisors and directors minus the Parks and Rec Director and the Finance Director, who were not here during that period. So we wanted to fit them into this. They did do, we did have sessions. It was a six-month course. Out of that, as I stated before in this meeting, that I have seen progression. The individual that is doing the training has a pulse of this organization, so to speak. That individual has a sense of what our culture is, has a sense of where we're trying to get to. And I know that's one of your questions. And I think that with that and the support of the mayor and the past city administrator, that we wanted to move forward with a session training, so to speak, and try to groom individuals that we feel are up-and-comers into this leadership style. This session was going to be, this next session was going to be a little more, let's say, mid-level supervisory. The other level was higher level, director level, middle management level. So we wanted to give individuals a chance to experience leadership, try to invest some time into their into their promotional opportunities and try to get them to understand our culture, where we want to go. You know, also, we have individuals that don't have supervisory experience. And the question I always get is, well, you know, I applied for this job. I didn't get it because I don't have the experience. How can I get the experience if you don't give me an opportunity? So we're trying to give them opportunities in this way where they have at least training in some sort of leadership realm, mixed in with human resource opportunities and some supervisory things. And I think we can, we can do that with this organization if we continue to move in that direction.
So to have this intimate knowledge of our city and working that long. So I see where, you know, he did some stuff in 2022 fall and met with the mayor and city administrator in the first quarter of 2023, fire chief in the summer. So how much, how many hours has he invested or have we, has he invested in what he's done for the city?
He's invested a lot of hours. He's also...
So we've not gone past $50,000 in terms of time and effort already?
I'm not sure about time and effort.
The next phase will take us over the 50.
Right.
The next phase will...
That's why we're here.
The 54,000, if I'm not mistaken, because our Finance Director, Blanche, broke it down for me.
Right.
Because that was the concern. It appears as we're paying a full 54,000, but we've already made certain payments. And this is the breakdown, and I appreciate that you gave me the numbers. For customer service training, he was paid $2,200. For leadership training, which included directors, managers, and I'm assuming supervisors, was $16,200 and some change. Then he did the training for the city administrator, our former city administrator, Ed Bass, who has passed away, and the mayor, just those two, from what I understand. That was $12,140. And then there was training for the Fire Chief Wyman for $6,000. And why it's being brought to us today is because there's an $18,000 bill for this succession, is what you call this training, that will include 12 staff members, and it's the 18,000 that's bringing it.
That's 22 staff members. I'm not sure about...
22, okay. I thought it was 12.
He did...
That is what's bringing it up over the 50,000 threshold.
Correct.
But to Commissioner Becker's question is, how many hours? Do we have those hours? And I think I did ask you that. I'm not sure if I asked you about the total hours so that we can have an idea of what the investment has been and sort of a report on a benchmark. I mean, what was, what was his mission or his intention when he first started? And where did we come to when he got finished with all this training? How are we measuring that benchmark? And I think it's a fair question, I think.
No, it is.
And so I just want to clarify that the 54,000 is not that we're paying him that. We've been paying him all along. It's the last session that is bringing this over the 50,000, so you're presenting it to us. But I just felt that at the lead-in package should have broken down how many hours he has invested in our city with the staff and what was the benchmark? What did he arrive to?
I have, I've never been asked how many hours he's invested. You know, so I'd have to calculate that. I don't know.
So how does he bill us and how did it come out to these different...
It's not based on hours. It's based on the program that he has. So this, you know, that's, that's how it's based.
But at the end of the day, at the end of the day, there should have been a statement of work outlining exactly what he was going to be hired on on a contract basis with the City of Apopka for upfront. We did not, as a council, I don't believe, approve for an evaluated source classification. But let me lay out the facts as I know them right now. We didn't approve the evaluated source. We're asking to be, to approve a sole source. Sole source meaning that they have a very unique proprietary service that we would not be able to really find anywhere else, which I'm contesting. We're now saying, okay, at the end of the day, he's going to be paid 54,000 if this is approved. That's all money going to that corporation. Really, what we're saying is that 36,000 has been committed thus far. It's really twofold is what we're voting for. Do we want to pay additional monies? And do we want to identify this as a sole source classification? Again, I don't know what the original scope of work was. We've heard piecemeal about what he's done in terms of services.
We didn't do like an RFP or anything for this previously, correct?
No, we didn't. We didn't expect to go over this amount. So the, during the first phase, the evaluation for his deliverables were focus and design to stimulate cultural change. You know, determine attitudes and skills, you know, demonstrated by the participants. One-on-one interviews and coaching, which he provides. He provides one-on-one interviews during, during, prior to the leadership training beginning. So he gets to know everyone and gets to know their concerns. 11 four-hour facilitated learning and development sessions. Nine two-hour follow-up segments. Executive leadership development classes and training to extend up to 12 months. And assist with implementation of new leadership functions and organizational changes. Six months of phone-in-person follow-up consulting and coaching with the DISC program to facilitate leaders understanding their staff and how to deal with individuals, both good and bad.
Is Mr. Robert Spencer in the audience today?
No, he's not.
Would it be feasible for us, or I would recommend that we table this and get some more information for us to review, to look at, and maybe at the next meeting, whatever.
Yeah, if that's what the commissioner is like, yeah, sure.
And then Mr. Spencer himself can come in?
I can ask, yeah.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah, because at the end of the day, it's the prerogative of staffing the administration to spend up to a certain amount. It just, it becomes problematic when you're asking us to go over a certain threshold, approve the expenditure under the guise of it being sole source, and that's what we're getting tripped up on.
Right.
Because it's not, it's not a very proprietary or a unique methodology.
No, I understand. I understand. Okay, so we'll table that. Item four, bring back. Mr. Spencer, why don't you just put it, I guess, under a business item then?
Okay, so we have to make a motion to table this. Right. So we'll table the...
Consent item four.
Consent item number four, which was to authorize the issuance of evaluated and source memo Institute for Human Development for, what date?
August 2nd.
August 2nd.
A motion by Commissioner Velazquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries now. Next up, ordinance number 3014.
Ordinance number 3014. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from county rural to mixed use for certain real properties generally located west of State Road 429, east of Golden Gem Road, and north of Capitol Reef Way. Owned by Hardy Holt Brenedette Hoffman, Brenedette Hoffman, Dana L. Hoffman, Carol A. Heck, Joyce and Brini Francois, comprising 44.74 acres, more or less, providing for separability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Okay. Any changes, Bobby?
Any changes, Bobby? Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter?
Auburn McKee, 3603 Golden Gem Road, Apopka. Once again, we're back to the contentious issue of whether or not this city administration is doing anything to communicate with Orange County and resolve problems of roads that the city don't own. And we're still left standing, not really knowing what's going to happen. So what I'm looking for is some commitment from the city to start negotiations with Orange County so that we start to either take roads over or begin negotiations so that we know when we're going to take roads over. It's really not acceptable for month after month for us to come here. And I spoke to Pam today. We had a, a long conversation. And I understand her frustration, and she understands my frustration. You know, Orange County need to be brought to the table to discuss roads. We continuously pass legislation to allow development in areas. And I understand the commission must, by Florida statute, pass certain developments. But again, you know, we look at Planning Department. The day I went in and asked what their mission statement was, I don't believe that, that we can live up to the mission statement of the planning department just now. They don't even have the information that they require. In November last year, Mr. Hitt, at this meeting, told us that he had spent 80K for a, an oversight to discuss the, the development that was going on. That was November last year. It was supposed to be produced for January. Still hasn't been produced. So the city has paid $80,000 for information, which would allow you, the commission, to evaluate and make decisions that we're not making. At this particular moment in time, you know, I believe that there's six houses, 6,000 houses going down at one end of Golden Gem Road on Kelly Park and that general area. But the fact of the matter is, without that report, we have no idea. I'm led to believe it's significantly more. Until we start to see reports, until you gentlemen and ladies start to get the information that you require, you're doing yourselves a disservice, and you're doing us a disservice as well. Thank you.
Anybody from the public? Anybody else? Okay. Close the public hearing. Look for a motion to approve, adopt ordinance number 3014. All right.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 3015.
Ordinance number 3015. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from County A1 Citrus Rural to KPI MU Kelly Park Interchange Mixed Use, assignment of neighborhood and employment district overlays for certain real property generally located west of State Road 429, east of Golden Gem Road, and north of Capitol Reef Way. Owned by Hardy Holt Brenedett Hoffman, Brenedett Hoffman, Dana Hoffman, Carol Hawke, Joyce and Brini Francois, comprising 44.74 acres, more or less, providing for separability, conflicts, and an effective date.
No changes. Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this one? Not will close the public hearing. Look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 3015.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta. Second by Commissioner Velasquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 3016.
Ordinance number 3016. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from T Transitional to KPI MU Kelly Park Interchange Mixed Use, assignment of interchange district overlay for certain real property generally located west of State Road 429, east of Golden Gem Road, and south of Kelly Park Road. Owned by Freeport Rapids Partners, GP, comprising 2.5 acres, more or less, providing for separability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Any changes, Bobby? Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing. Look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 3016.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution 2023-18. Blanche?
Resolution 2023-18. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2022, and ending September 30, 2023, providing for a budget amendment.
Thank you. Again, as Susan just mentioned, resolution number 2023-18, requesting to amend the FY 23 budget in the amount of $1,852,000. The first item pertains to Kelly Park property, amending the budget for $1.3 million. This is a developer agreement credit reimbursement that we received the 1.3 from the developer, and they have completed some of the design work associated with that development agreement. So they are requesting reimbursement in the amount of 1.3 million. The next item, number two, pertains to Camp Weewar conversion to city water. Again, this is a requirement of the grant that we receive for Camp Weewar land, Camp Weewar land acquisition. And we have to do the conversion to the city water, and we need additional funds to do so in the amount of $552,200. And that includes a contingency component in there.
Just had a quick question on that one. Do we have a timeline for that? Obviously, it says it needs to be done in less than six months.
Yes, and we're requesting an extension.
Okay. I was about to say, just knowing what things take to build, that's not going to happen.
I know.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing. Look for a motion to approve resolution 2023-18. Got a motion by Commissioner Becker?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution 2023-19. Pam?
Resolution 2023-19. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, authorizing the City of Apopka to name a new road in the City of Apopka, which connects Okoye Apopka Road to Martin Road, and to rename Harmon Road from Benyon Road to Okoye Apopka Road to Bill Aerosmith Parkway.
So before I start, I'd just like to mention that there have been some negative things said already before I even had a chance to present. And I would assure you that not everybody feels that way. So if you would just have an open mind till I finish, and then we can have a discussion, if you like. So this is a request, as Susan mentioned, to name and rename a road to Bill Aerosmith Parkway. And our contractor had some aerials flown. The road's finished. This is, uh, this is the eastern half of the road where it connects to Martin. This is the whole road, looking at it from the, um, from the north, sorry. And then this is another view that is looking at it, looking from the south to north. You can see the intersection. The road's finished. The signal's in. What we're waiting on right now is Duke Energy to get us some power. We got delayed because that development to the north, this one, they actually started before we did, and they're not even close to being finished. But at the same time, we needed power up, they decided to install their gas lines. And Duke Energy won't power us up while they're installing gas. And on this one, you can see, too, the, the pad. We're ready to get that fire station installed, and then ponds, sidewalk. Soon as we get powered up, we'll eventually get the light flash, and then we'll have our ribbon cutting. this is one of the few roads the city has constructed in the last 20 years. As we approach completion, a citizen suggested we name the road after Bill Aerosmith. Mr. Aerosmith has been a resident of Apopka since 1956. He has had an impressive career in the banking industry that has spanned over 53 years. He started his career in 1968 at State Bank of Apopka as a bookkeeper. And by 1979, he'd risen to the rank of vice president. He is now the senior vice president of one Florida bank. Mr. Aerosmith immersed himself in serving the community. He was a City of Apopka council member for 36 years. Some of his other community involvement includes past president of Apopka J.C.'s, founding member of Apopka Surtoma Club, past director and coach of Apopka Little League, member of Apopka Chamber for 53 years, past president and vice president of Tri-County League of Cities, member of the Rotary Club for over 53 years, and served as past president, received the Rotarian of the Year Award and the Apopka Chambers Businessman of the Year Award, lifetime member of the Apopka Historical Society, mentor at Dream Lake Elementary for 12 years, and founding member of the Apopka Elks. But his most significant contribution to the City of Apopka was when he was serving as a trustee for the North Orange Memorial Hospital. He was instrumental in bringing emergency room services to the City of Apopka. His commitment to quality healthcare for Apopka continued as he served as chairman of the North Orange Memorial Hospital Scholarship Committee for 30 years and awarded over $650,000 in scholarships to Apopka-area students pursuing a career in medicine. For the city's land development code, the city council may consider requests to name or rename a city road or street right away by resolution, provided it meets applicable policies and regulations. Regarding changing a street name, any person within the city may petition to change a street name. A reason for the request must be given, and the request must be consistent with the city's plan for street naming, addressing, and emergency system. And then there's one final criteria, is that 75% of the affected property owners must not object to the change. And I apologize for my really high-quality map here. Everything outlined in red is owned by the City of Apopka. Everything outlined in blue is owned by our partner, Florida Expressway, Central Florida Expressway. And then the parcels that are along Harmon Road that aren't outlined are not affected parties because their address is not on Harmon Road. You can see the hospital, it's addressed to Okoye Apopka Road. And then, oh dear. This development, right here, apartments are addressed to Benyon Road. By my calculations, 57% of the parcels that you see are under the control of the city and 43% under Expressway authority. The Expressway's been contacted, and they are in agreement that, or they are, they don't object to us changing the name of the road, and they're going to send that to me in writing. They had one thing to check about actual structures, to make sure they didn't have anything signed or anything. But, but to them, it's not a problem. In fact, what Glenn Pressimo told me, it's, in his opinion, it's, it's appropriate, given Mr. Aerosmith's background, the proximity to the hospital, and so forth. Before I finish my presentation, I'd like to ask verbally Nielsen Swanson, who actually brought forward the request to name the road. I'm sure I didn't do justice to Mr. Aerosmith, and I'm going to let her tell you why she brought this forward and why this is a good decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Pamela. Thank you for the opportunity to be here and speak to this. And I just want to say that Apopka is an incredibly special community. I started my healthcare career here, and I knew Bill Aerosmith at that time because he was very engaged with the hospital. I came with it as Florida Hospital Apopka. Many of you may know that it used to be a tax-supported hospital and was struggling. And Bill, as part of the board, looked for options to continue to provide healthcare in the Apopka community. And they put out proposals, and they had presentations, and Florida Hospital won that opportunity. And Florida Hospital has been a part of the Apopka community since '75. And I came, and I was an administrative assistant, and I was only going to be here for a summer job. And I call it this endless summer because I fell in love with healthcare. And so I remained at Apopka. My boss, the administrator, thought, oh, you'd be a good person to lead and develop. I heard all the discussions tonight about development and, and training, which is so very important. So I did that. I worked, I worked here for three years. And then I did an administrative, I got my master's, did an administrative residency program, worked at Orlando and Altamont. And I finally got my dream job, to come back to Apopka as the administrator. And again, I had the opportunity to work with Bill. Because as chairman of, the other thing I didn't say is that when it was sold, funds were put into a scholarship program to encourage young people to go into medicine and careers. And as Pamela said, $650,000 under Bill's 30 years of chairing that committee have benefited. And there have been doctors and dentists and nurses and lab techs, and I could just continue on. Because those meetings were held at the hospital, so I had a bird's eye view for that. And Bill continued to be engaged and active with our foundation. His wife, Janine, and his family were supportive. And beyond that, at any event, and when I came back, I was here, and I had the privilege of being the administrator for 20-plus years. And I just love Apopka. But anywhere you would go, to a, any kind of a community event, a civic event, Bill was there. Bill was supportive of it. And he had his public service to the commission and all of his various organizations that he has supported, I think demonstrates his passion, his commitment. And yes, there are people that were founders of Apopka. But we stand on the shoulders of those folks, and we need to continue to move forward and progress. And I would wholeheartedly encourage the commission to approve this resolution. And I think it's very fitting because it comes right to the, almost to the doorstep of Florida, oh, excuse me, Advent, Advent Health Apopka. And that represents Bill's passion and commitment to not only keep healthcare here, but to expand it. And for those of you from history, when that hospital was built, North Orange Memorial Hospital, there was not an emergency department. And that was one of the things that was included into the criteria from the board, was that an emergency department needed to be opened. And I think it's been a blessing to the community to have Florida Hospital, Advent Health here. And they have continued to provide and add additional services. So again, I wholeheartedly do encourage it. And it's a recognition of leadership and going forward. And I review, and the hospital is supportive of this as well. Thank you.
Thank you verbally. Okay. So any questions for Pam before we open it up?
Well, I mean, and I brought this up during the meeting on Monday. I don't want to broach any of the commentary that was said during public comment at this point. The, but there was one that was said that another citizen had raised to me. And the fact is, Harmon is named currently after a long time of Apopka. And so how can we justify renaming it when it's already been named after an Apopka?
Well, I, I searched around. I asked a lot of old-time Apopkas. I talked to people that I thought might know, and nobody really could come up with the real history. I, I'm not sure where the information came from. I would tell you that we have a lot of roads in Apopka that are named after whoever lived along them. I could name several that are not technically roads, or they were just dirt roads that went to someone's house. And for maybe mail purposes, I've lived on one of those roads before. You just have to give it a name. So you name it after the people that lived there. Hooper Farms Road, Chandler Road. There are quite a few of them. And, and so I don't know that history.
But, but you, but now new.
I, I heard history. I, I would have to validate all that before I could.
And that's the point. We don't know the circumstances on how that road was, came to be about, Harmon Road. But the fact is that Willard Harmon, 96 years old, correct me if I'm wrong, passed away in '86. Based off the research I did after I got that information, is, was a member of First Baptist of Apopka, the Rock Springs Sportsman's Club. I mean, so I don't, I don't know the, the nature of how. I mean, so I don't, I don't know the nature of how that road came to be. I don't know if there was as exciting as an individual that nominated Mr. Harmon to have that road nominated after him. Point being is that, hey, I'm one to talk, right? Commissioner Aerosmith and I have history. I ran against him seven, eight years ago to get the seat. You know, it was very contentious, but since then, we've worked together on many items, effectively. So it's not about that, it's more about the, what we're being presented with, it's already got a name of a historic person from Apopka. That's where I'm struggling.
Perhaps there's a compromise. There is a new road. Perhaps Harmon Road between Okoya-Popka and Benyon can remain Harmon Road, and the new road be named Bill Aerosmith Parkway.
Yeah, but then you're fragmenting Harmon.
Just like Yothers and Lester.
By where?
Yothers and Lester. Yeah, it's Yothers and Lester. You get to a point on Yothers where it turns to Lester.
Okay.
You could, you could say the same thing about that.
But what I'm saying is that Harmon as its current form, the street itself currently in operation, is named Harmon.
Between Benyon and Okoya-Popka Road.
From Marden to Benyon is named Harmon Road.
No, we just built, we just built this, we just built the segment from.
It was an extension.
We just built a new piece of road.
You extended it.
Excuse me. We just built a new piece of road that, we called it, yes, we called it the Harmon Extension because we didn't have a name. We have a resident, along with, longstanding with the city par code that's come forward and requested that we name this road after a very esteemed member of our community. And I think it's a fair request.
I'm not faulting anybody, and I'm pleased that she did. Hey, Bill, Commissioner Aerosmith served for nearly forty years on this dais. I can't even imagine the, the commitment that was to do it for that many years. I don't necessarily share the same personal experiences that people that came to the lectern during personal, or, uh, public comment share, but that's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about renaming a road that currently, and I'm going to argue the point, it's Harmon from Marden to Benyon. It got connected by the extension that we're talking about, but it's Harmon Road. And I think there's plenty of opportunity for streets that will be built within the city of Apopka to bestow that honor upon at some point. But I'm getting feedback from people, parties that you described here, like Expressway Authority, things like that, that aren't saying that they gave the green light to this. So where I'm struggling is that are all the dots connected here, all the Ts crossed, Is dotted?
I just talked to Glenn Pressimone earlier this afternoon, and I just got an email from him.
Okay.
So I don't know who you're getting that from at Expressway.
So, and then two, just to go through the criteria again, because you, you mentioned it, but criteria one is affected property owners shall mean any person owning property adjacent to a road or a street right-of-way, and here's that funny and/or statement, any structure or business with an assigned address which will be affected by the street name change as identified on the latest county tax map. So one could say, even if you don't have a physical address naming Harmon Road, if you are abutting those properties, you would still have to be part of this seventy-five percent approval. The road and street name change request identifies the reason for the proposed change, which we received tonight, so we've got that. And then the last bit is, the city council finds the request is consistent with the overall city plans for road and street naming. That I don't know because I don't know what the plan is in terms of that, but.
We don't have like a street name plan, but there are, there are rules, like you can't name streets with letters and numbers, even though we have some of those, things like that.
Yeah, I mean.
It can't be a duplicate, it can't be an offensive name.
Yeah, again, I'm not opposed to doing what we're doing, it's, I just, I don't approve doing the Harmon Road, for the reasons that I stated.
Well, if I can chime in here too, just real quick, briefly, the, I think too, I guess, there's no policy in place, and correct me if I'm wrong, of what qualifies somebody to be named, effectively? I, I guess, what was the last time we named something after someone?
Jason Dwelly.
So what qualified that? What?
He was a long, a resident or a native of Apopka that was killed in action.
In Afghanistan.
And somebody brought his name forward, and the road was named after him.
Right, so and then, again, we had the Billy Dean Center too, so I just, I think there needs to be some type of policy as well that we put in place that.
The policy says that the council or resident may come forward to name and rename a road with, if they give a reason.
Well, more specifically, that item C says, the city council finds the request is consistent with the overall city plans. I mean, that, I think that is what you're really trying to get at.
Right.
But again, I'm not expecting a road to be named after me for giving eight years of service on city council. Forty years is a different story, I get that. My hang-up is just the road in question is already named after an Apopka. So, that's.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at, I'm looking at the maps right now, just general maps on, on my iPad, and you click on the east side of that road, and it says Harmon Road. So it is, that would be just, it would all be Harmon. I'm sure that's what the intention was there, so it's not like this is an unnamed road.
I'm not sure that's the case because it was a three-way agreement to get the property to even put the road in. So I mean, I don't know that that's.
There's only one parcel over there, it's open space that belongs to that residential community. The rest of it is either owned by the city or the Expressway, or it's public right-of-way.
Yeah, what I would prefer is, and again, Commissioner Smith is not here, for something like this, I would want the full council to weigh in on a, on a, what could potentially be an honor bestowed upon a former commissioner. And I think, again, there's, there's my conflict around the street itself. I just want to make sure, as a full board, where all of our opinions are.
I forgot that Commissioner Smith wasn't going to be here, I'm sorry.
No, no.
I was here at the last meeting when he said he wasn't.
Yeah, I'm just making an observation, because I don't want this to, to turn into something that it shouldn't for this evening, when I think that time isn't necessarily of the essence for this one, and I think it's worthy for Commissioner Smith to weigh in as well.
Hmm.
And maybe it'll afford us a little bit more time to research the Harmon.
And maybe think about a compromise when I come back.
So what precipitated this? I mean, it was a resident that, just one resident asked to have that road renamed? Ms. Swinberg, that was it? You started your statement that you didn't want to hear anything negative, and I don't want to present that.
No, I didn't say that. I said I wanted y'all to have an open mind because so much negative rhetoric was coming your way before I even got a chance to get up here and say anything.
I didn't hear any negative rhetoric from here, but I certainly have received, I mean, I received an eighteen-page of newspaper clippings, and I've received emails, texts, and not one was in favor of this. So at some point, that has to be brought up, so I.
I know, Commissioner, but if you think about it this way, there's stuff in the paper about all of us all the time, and most of it's not true.
But we're not, we're not speaking to us, because we're not asking for any streets to be named by us. I'm not asking about that. But like anything else, when we put something on an agenda, whether it's an ordinance, a resolution, or whatever, we do get feedback, and I will tell you that I have gotten plenty of feedback, and so that is a consideration for me.
Could you share that with me, so I would have at least a chance to.
Well, I mean, it came.
Test it.
Absolutely, I mean, I'll send you the emails that I did get, and certainly give you that, and, but I, I'm going to echo what Commissioner Smith, and Commissioner Smith, and I apologize.
I'm three people.
Commissioner, I know, Becker, and that is that I would, I would wait for Commissioner Smith to be present, and, and I will definitely send you everything that I have received.
Okay, and I just want to hammer home this point. My focus is making sure, like, again, focus on code.
Right.
Let's get rid of all the kind of peripheral at this point. Section five, one, three, four of the Land Development Code outlining streets and the process by which to rename a street.
Yes.
Making sure that by the next meeting, there's full confidence that each one of those criteria is fully adhered to, to, one we already knew tonight, the other two that are fully adherents. And I think to Mr. Nessa's point, there should be some general guidance around what staff feels is kind of inside the realm of appropriate to do, like that sort of honor. But again, I think it's a better decision to have all five of us here for.
And all I have right now is the code as written, and, you know, I do my best to understand and, and bring something to you that's, that comports with the code.
All right, so you want to just have a motion to?
Can we just table to?
Table, it's in the August second meeting.
August second's going to be busy. Do we have anything with public comment?
If we're going to table it, we'll just, and you've already.
Yeah, I know. History was brought up, and I'm the one that brought up history. So I'll tell you how I know history. I've been here for six, seven years. My father before me, my grandfather before him, my grandfather and my father were friends with Mr. Harmon. Harmon Road, for those of you that haven't lived here long enough, I'd like to remind you, before they cut in the big buffer dam, four fifty-one and four twenty-nine, Harmon Road used to go all the way from Okoya-Popka to Benyon Road. I used to cut through there dove hunting all the time, it was a straight shot. When they put the four twenty-nine through, they dead-ended it, and the reason they didn't open it back up is because there were no residents between where they severed it and Okoya-Popka Road. The name was given to the road because it ran through the middle of his groves. Regardless of where it ran, he was an esteemed citizen of this city. He was a civic participant. He helped pay for the Little League program that went on here. And, and we're going to toss Apopka history to the side, okay. Mr. Aerosmith was a city commissioner for thirty years. Let me remind you, he's the only city commissioner that's ever been embroiled in an ethics commission investigation that cost the city thousands of dollars. He's the only city commissioner that was ever investigated by the news media investigative reporters, and then had to not vote on things because his bank was affiliated with it. And last, I want to remind you that he's still an officer on the bank that cheated the city taxpayers out of hundreds of thousands of dollars because of Mayor Nelson's poor judgment, Mr. Bask, God rest his, or his soul, and David Rankin. How much money was made off of that? It sure wasn't the taxpayers, and Aerosmith was deep in the middle of it.
It's a little word that they wanted to extend.
If I, if I heard right, Ms. Pam stated that the people that are around that affected from this name change, and could nominate, those are the ones that could nominate for the name change. And I don't believe the young lady have any property around Herman Road. But I'd be remiss to not bring up Billy Dean. Billy Dean, for twenty years, sat on that daisis. Thirty-some years that he was an educator in Apopka. Whether you like Billy Dean or not, he served Apopka. Billy Dean was a decorated war veteran, Korean War veteran, Medal of Honor. Me and him didn't see eye to eye, but that didn't take away from what he did for the city of Apopka. And to name a road after him, the city wouldn't recognize that. The only thing the city would do was, he would either accept his name to go on Lorenzo William Park, another black city councilman that put twenty years into the city. But no, why Billy Dean couldn't get a road? But now Aerosmith, he gets a road. All it's going to boil down to, it's going to come down to this map, because if you remember, he had a friend of his wife that come up in here and said something, and they put in a new ordinance of law, and they named it after her. Come on, it's time to be fair. Let the name stand. If you want to name it after somebody, we have members in this chamber right now have served in the military. And there's a saying, some have gave some and some have given all, given all. If you want to name it after somebody, if you're going to take it away from somebody, give it to somebody deserving with a streaky, clean record.
With all due respect, Ms. Richmond, by definition, is an extension, okay? Brush Drive was an extension, designed and built by the city, designed by me. To show that map of all that property owned by government as being the seventy percent that can say or not say, that has nothing to do with all these people telling you what the history is, and history matters.
I want to try to put this in perspective, because you're right, we can put a lot of names, and we can nominate a lot of names. We can, we can nominate a lot, a lot of names, but what does it mean to the city council when we put a name, when we honor somebody on a street name for everybody to see for years and for decades to come? And we don't consider these things, principles, integrity, honesty, accountability, responsibility, morals, ethics, characters, procedures, leadership, and laws. What standard do we give to somebody when we put their name immortal for years to come? What criteria other than, hey, what's in the code? When a name goes on a street or building, everybody should have lived by these principles. What are we teaching our kids? It don't matter what you did. What are we teaching our kids? It just belittles me to see how we conduct business. Well, if I want to nominate somebody, nominate Mr. Rucker there. What standard, what, 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 what are we setting here? And then to listen to the things that we're arguing about, if you have an issue with a person's character, it shouldn't be posted there. If you got an issue with somebody's ethics, they shouldn't be on a, a street sign. And we all are not dumb, we can go and Google a lot of this stuff, and the information is right there for you. So when you have somebody that you admire, remember, you see them as one way, somebody else may see them as another way. If you look at a lot of people who was convicted of a crime, or even, they got a sister, they got a brother, they got a mother, they got a father that loves them, and they think one way about them. But who was the victim of that, they got a whole different thought process. So ma'am, I can appreciate your views of Mr. Aerosmith, but also appreciate other people's views of Mr. Aerosmith, if we want to be honest about it. It's time to move forward in fairness, honesty, and do what's right. Where's our moral conscience? And this Sunday, everybody's going to probably wind up in a church saying, thank you, hallelujah! And look how we act. And look how we act. Thank you.
Anybody else?
If you're looking at even renaming the extension, given the proximity devastation number six, it should be Austin-Duran. Thank you.
Everybody? All right. We'll look for a motion to...
Table to the August 2.
To table it to the August 2 city council meeting.
Some of...
Motion by Commissioner Becker.
Second.
Say by Mr. Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries down. Next up, City Council reports. Mr. Velasquez.
Well, just want to say that we spent the week welcoming new residents into Apopka through Habitat of Humanity, and that's pretty much it for me right now. But want to welcome two new families into Apopka. I attended both, as did the mayor, and we appreciate, and we welcome, the new homeowners, because when they come into the community, they build a community. So, that's it for me right now.
Mr. Becker?
Yeah, so the first one, I wanted to touch base with Mr. Shepherd. So, I know at the last meeting, I put forth the language around potential community by committee charter review. There was a takeaway to, you know, get together with me solely, but, you know, we had a good conversation after the last meeting. We chatted today via phone, and I thought it would just be best to deliver the message to the council at one time versus having one-off conversations. So, just kind of, if you could talk through the nuance of either direction, and kind of pros and cons.
Sure. Well, let me first start by saying, I've done probably 20, 25 charter reviews in a 39-year legal career, so it's not something with which I'm unfamiliar, and I've done them literally every way I think there is to do them. For example, I was in the Orange County Charter Review Commission General Counsel for the prior review that's, to the one that's going on now. That is an all-appointed, 17-member independent charter review. The council has no say in what actually goes on the ballot, even when it's illegal. And that's part of what happened in the last charter view. And then the voters vote on it, thinking they're voting on something that's legal. They pass it by 83, 4%, and it can't do absolutely nothing. And that, for those who don't know what I'm talking about, is the right of water to be something you can sue on behalf of. So, that kind of stuff happens. I've also been on citizen-led charter reviews, which, where council people appoint citizens, and then they run a review that runs for however long they go through, and they bring their ideas to the table, and ultimately, we put together suggestions before council, and then council has to do what it has to do anyway, which is decide of those things that have been suggested by the citizens, which ones actually go on the ballot. That creates a unique dynamic, because if you are in a situation where you are the elected official, and you are considering the citizens' input that you solicited to serve on that body, you are placed in a position of then having to potentially say to that person, "Thank you for your service, but this won't work," for any number of reasons. And then the third way is the way that is always available to you, and that is to review the charter yourself. And there are a number of reasons why I favor that method. The first one is, you all have some understanding of how government is supposed to work, and the parameters on what is legal and what is not legal. For example, you would know automatically that even if it sounded real popular to have an amendment to the charter that said you could never raise taxes, you would know, "You can't do that." Those are the kinds of things that come up in an all-citizen-led charter review. And so, that is where my experience comes from. And so, in order to get through a charter view and actually review the charter, it requires a set course, where you look at the charter as a whole, and you try to get through a certain number of sections in a meeting, where everybody comes prepared. I will review it and say, based on what I see, these are things that could be a problem, and if I don't see any, I won't bring anything up, but that doesn't mean that you're precluded from bringing anything up. And to the point that was raised by one of the citizens about being excluded, that's the opposite of the what we run. In that context, citizen participation is hugely important, because everybody knows we're going to discuss, for example, Sections 1 through 3. And so, they can come prepared, looking at just those sections, you have a rather long charter compared to some, and say, "I have an idea about this or that." And then we can have directed conversation before you about the merits of those proposals. As we go through those sections of the charter, notes are kept by me, and we put together ultimately what will be brought back to you as a final report, and then you will decide what you want to see in ordinance. And the ordinance comes before you because of when the election cycle is, and we go through two readings. All of those meetings include public input, every single one. And at any time during a charter review, citizens can submit, if they don't want to come to the podium, they can submit in writing, "I have a proposal to be considered," and y'all can bring it up as a group or individually. So, the idea that it excludes the citizens, it is absolutely the opposite of that. And in fact, in a moment, I'm going to tell you about an important part of the puzzle, which we call the parking lot. But at any rate, you make the agenda for, you know, we divide the charter up in sections. I'll make a suggestion about what I think after I see what's in what as to what would be the best go, and how many meetings it should take to get through that. We start on a timeline, working back from when the supervisor of elections would need to have our ballot materials to get it on whatever ballot you want to get it on. So, as an example, I know this because I'm going through the Eatonville charter right now. We're getting, we're close to the end of that process. The deadline for the next general election in March has to be to Bill Calh's office by December 12. And so, we started with that date, and then worked back a schedule that would allow us to complete all the meetings, the report, the public discussion, the preparation of the ordinance, the two readings, and then submission, and with some extra time built in for the parking lot. So, let's talk about that. Sometimes you get bogged down. We try to say, one of the recommendations I make is set a specific time, say, 2 hours, and stick to it. Don't say 2 hours, become 3 or 4 or 5. It's 2 hours. It makes people work on a time schedule. And I can take notes pretty quick and get the idea of where you want to go, and then bring you back something. But if you get stuck, a good example of what's going on in Eatonville, they're going to consider, don't know whether it's going to make it to the ballot or not, whether they should change from a strong mayor government to a council manager form of government. That was a parking lot issue. When it came up, there were council people who wanted to talk about it, wanted to consider it, but weren't ready to decide it. So, we parked that issue, and we come back to it, once we get additional citizen input, and we will then decide, do you want to see such an amendment on the ballot or not, for the voters to ultimately decide? And this is critical point two. None of this is decided at the final measure by you guys. It's decided by the citizens. So, again, citizen input is all the way through and is the final say. Your suggestions or things that you want the voters to consider are ultimately decided by them. And so, that is the process that I recommend, because it's efficient. In using the Orange County model as an example of what doesn't work, I was there for over a year, and we never, and I can't say this enough, reviewed the charter. We went through with people coming in, said, "I want this. I'd like something on water." Or, "I want this. I want something on Spliddock Forest," which was another one. These are important things. There's no doubt about it, but the charter didn't get reviewed. And that's the difference between a charter review and a wish list.
No, thank you for that. And I think, having that laid out, again, with Commissioner Smith back, you know, you've got two options on the table, but at the end of the day, I think it's something that we need to embark on and look at it, refresh it where it needs to be refreshed. And, you know, again, it's commitment to the people that have put this in our office, where we've talked in the past about reviewing these things. So, I guess we would table that to one, well, not table, it's not official business, but I would love to discuss it when Commissioner Smith is back.
As you all know, this is a brief memo that outlines what I said, and as I mentioned, for everything I put in here, there's a reason. I'm happy to discuss for you at any detail you want, but you get the general idea.
Got it.
Okay.
A general, two general, I hate to call it housekeeping items, but Dr. Rowe had been reaching out around the On Street Media contract. The only question I have, the only question I have is, there was some clarification around, does the state of Florida DOT, are they in agreement with the program as it currently I just want to make sure, again, from a contractual perspective, the Ts are crossed, the Is are dotted, in terms of, the program itself is legitimate from the state's eyes.
You may recall, I think it's been about a year, they went dormant for about a year because there was some issue with their state and federal contract, and they spent a lot of time in Tallahassee getting that straightened out. And Commissioner, I wish I could remember the date. I just looked at it the other day. But you approved an amendment to that agreement that deals specifically with what you're asking about. So, we're in full compliance. Our agreement isn't with DOT or the feds. It's with On Street Media. It's their deal with them, but they're in full compliance, and we're in full compliance.
Yeah, and that's the clarification. I just wanted to be able to answer back properly. I mean, I remember us approving the initial contract.
I will send you...
It says FDOT on the contract, but it's the local version of FDOT versus the state agency. So, there was that confusion on my part.
It took a while to get, for them to get, jump through all the DOT's hoops, as you'll recall, there are all these conditions. You can't have drugs, or alcohol, or other things.
Political signs.
Yeah.
That's all, I'm good. Then another question, just general procedural, the see, click, fix. Who's responsible for monitoring those requests that come through the website when residents report an issue? The only reason why I ask is there was one that was on, someone tagged me in some post the other day about the sign at the cemetery. Radley got on it when I made them aware of the situation, but a few people on that thread had mentioned about how they had used the see, click, fix, and they just weren't getting any responses. I just want to make sure that someone's monitoring that, and there's like a process by which to reply.
I can certainly give you some input on it.
Sure.
Robert Hippler, Information Technology Director. So, the see, click, fix is just a CRM forward-facing for the residents coming through the city to report potholes, or whatever, whatever the issue may be they'd like to report for the city to correct. Each of those request types are routed to specific departments. So, potholes would be routed to public services. There's an image of who would get that request, and they would address it, and it's either they're going to acknowledge that they received the request, and they're looking into it. So, depending on the type of request the individual chooses, that's how it gets routed to the department.
Got it. Does it automatically create work orders out of that?
It does. Sure does.
Got it. Okay. Yeah, I mean, sometimes it's probably me worth exploring with the individuals saying that to understand, you know, what's the true payment? Is it literally you applied, and then you haven't heard something in 24 hours versus 24 days? I just needed to understand the...
Correct. And that's, once it gets to the department it goes to, I don't, you know, I don't know how long they have to take care of from there. So, I can't tell you how long that'll take.
So, it generates a work order immediately when they...
As soon as you hit the go button, it's a work order.
This is something that is an email or anything responded to the resident that is inputting?
They'll get acknowledgement that it has been accepted. Correct.
Something is, they get something in return that confirms that it was received.
That is correct.
Okay. I'll have to go on there and try that.
Yeah, if I hear anything back in terms of...
And I can certainly show you one-on-one, just so you can see the backend of it, to see what it looks like. I have no problem doing that.
Okay. And the last bit is, has the RFP window closed on the project manager bid?
No, I just got something from that.
RFP?
Close on July 28.
July 28?
Right.
Okay.
Today was just the last day for any questions from those who were bidding.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Nesta?
Just two quick things. There are property we own, Forest Avenue, 526 South Forest Avenue, and Mr. Shepherd, this is kind of directed towards you. I'd asked our last attorney to write up a lease, since the council had a, pretty much gave that nod and go-ahead to write the lease to New Journey Youth Center, so that was never done, and we need that in some capacity to be... I don't know about the project, but I'll ask Mr.... I'll connect with you about it. Sure. I'm happy to, we do leases, no problem. Thank you. Last one is basically the Apopka Dog Mayor. Voting is coming up. I think it's August 5 is the final day for that. Each dog represents a charity that they're representing, and you can go to apopkadogmayor.com. Every dollar that you donate goes towards a vote, and as of this week, I am healthily leading my candidate with Asher.
Yes.
Well, Lola Bear is going to come from behind.
I am not concerned in any way.
Game on.
But that's it. Thank you.
Anything else? Cliff, you got anything?
Not yet.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, just want to let everybody know, on July 26, 7:00 PM, our special meeting to set the tentative mileage rate. And with that...